Good afternoon. Welcome to the Main Street Historic Commission. Looks like spring has finally arrived in the borough and Happy St. Patty's Day to all you folks out there. Brendan, would you like to call to where the roll call?
I'll be glad to. Linda Anderson.
Here.
Jim Beckling.
Here.
David Becker.
Here.
Deborah Belcher.
Here.
Rick Cantrell.
Here.
Jim Thompson.
Here.
Mayor Mike White.
Here.
Howard Wilson.
We have a quorum, but I don't think we have to vote on anything today. And unfortunately, if we do, I have to abstain from voting since I'm involved with the church. But we can ask to approve the minutes since we do have a quorum. So any additions or deletions or changes to the minutes of the last meeting. I ask for a motion to approve then.
Move to approve.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved and a new business. Robert?
Yes Chairman Becker. What we have this month is a request from, the address is 404 East Main Street. It's the Central Christian Church. And they're requesting some guidance on some problems they're having with their roof and how it's causing some damage inside the church. Evidently, the parapets and the roof where they meet, they're causing some drainage problems. The water's coming inside and they want to know what, if anything, can be done to the parapets or, you know, just basically what can be done without too much cost incurring into the project. The agenda materials that I sent out, they show the pictures of the church itself and I believe that Mr. Hill from the church has a PowerPoint presentation that will even verify more what he's talking about. And I can turn it over to him for his PowerPoint presentation and he can explain a little bit better than I can of what they're going through.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I thank the commission for the opportunity to be here today to get some preliminary guidance on perhaps what we can do about the situation that we're facing. With me today are Janet Mills, she's our past moderator or chairperson of the board at the church, Dr. Steve Odom, who is our senior pastor, and Barrister Haynes, who as many of you know, who is our current moderator or chairman of the board. In addition, David Wilson is here, who is a member of our property committee, and Dennis Becker, who is a member of our property committee, and I'm the chair of that property committee. Okay, thank you. What you see here in the first slide is just an introduction of the physicians of the people who are most intimately involved in this particular project. If I can advance it. There we go. Okay. This particular structure was built in 1913. It is in the East Main Historic District and this particular structure has served us very well. We had our 100th anniversary last year and at that anniversary, we did extensive work on the exterior of the church, including the dome, to preserve it and coat it and make sure that it was functional. We felt like at that point that we were past some of the major problems that we were facing in trying to maintain this grand old lady. But as we took a look closer at it this year, it became readily apparent that we are not past that point. This is some of the handout material that I provided to you. We are really looking for guidance at this point. We have not entertained an engineering opinion at this point because we would like to know from the commission what you deem as permissible under your guidelines before we go ahead and invest in that engineering workup. Here are some photos and drawings. There are some here that are added after the handout materials were provided to you. And the first thing has to do with the condition of the underlayment of the roof. And this is tongue-in-prove, six-inch boards. You can see that it's cracked in many places, needs to be replaced. So clearly, we have a roofing issue that is in some sense separate from the issue that we're here to talk about today. So it's something that we're going to have to incur. It gets a little bit worse in places we have no underlayment at all. It's just completely cracked away and in some places, it's pretty much a disaster. So that is a major expense that we will incur. And we've begun collecting the estimates to get that work done. Now, if you look at the drainage system that we have now, what you'll see, it's the internal drainage system that was common in the 18th and 19th century where the water drains off the roof into an internal pan and then from that down a drainage pipe out below the parapet wall and then exiting down the downspouts outside. We have had significant leakage coming from those areas that has produced damage on the internal walls of the church. We've also had some ceiling damage and about three or four years ago, after Christmas Eve services, we lost about six by eight foot section of the plaster ceiling that came crashing down into the sanctuary. So we're very concerned about whatever we do. We want to make sure it's done right and that we can safely use that sanctuary. This is a view of the parapet wall from the outside. You can see that the flashing that has been applied has not been done well. Also, it needs to be tuck pointed all the way around if we maintain those walls. This is just another close-up view of the condition of those walls. This is a view of the top of one of the parapet walls and one of the inner drain pans. And you can see that the shallow nature of this pan, as opposed to the runoff from the roof shingles, makes it possible, according to one of the people we've had up there, one of the contractors, that this may well fill up, splash back and overflow back under the shingles and then drain down against the walls inside producing the damage. This is another view of one of the pans. You can see that appears that it's been coated with fiberglass at some point. We do not know what the original material was. Apparently, back in the 18th century, copper was common and it may be that we have sheet metal up there because this is a later structure, but we don't know. If we look at the drains coming out of the particular inner pans, this is one particular one where you can see clearly that it's been coated with, it looks probably like tar. It's cracked and is probably responsible for leakage. And here is another one, the similar kind of condition. So that brings us to the issue of how can we handle that leakage. One recommendation was that if we could dispense with the parapet walls and extend the roof down so that, oops, excuse me, so that it runs down just to an outer gutter and downspout, that that would solve the problem. Okay? The parapet walls are not structurally supporting anything. Okay? They just sit on top of the church wall. And so bringing the roof out, extending it down, we could bypass that whole issue and that would be one solution. And so it might look something like this. This is a picture, it's actually a Photoshop that David Wilson did where he just took out the parapet wall in the back by Photoshop-ing to give us an idea of what it might look like without that parapet wall. Now, that is not the only particular solution to this problem. There are other ways it could be handled. One suggestion was to go through the parapet walls and install external drain ports that would drain out past the parapet walls, at the bottom of the walls, and that would prevent any buildup of the water. So that is another possible solution. So at this point, I would be willing to handle any questions that you have that I haven't clarified. I'd like to be able to have the other members of the church who are here to be able to respond to those as well and then get your opinions on where you think we might go with this.
Thanks, Mr. Mills. And I have to say, we as a board here really appreciate the extensive photos and looking at all these different options and so we can get a really good feel what the problem is up there. If any of the other church members wants to speak at any time, if they could come to the podium where the mic is, we would appreciate it. On our board today, we have Jim Thompson, who is an architect here in the middle Tennessee and has done some extensive work with parapets. So I'm going to first hand it over to him and for some ideas from his point of view and the rest of the board.
Well, thanks Chairman. First off, the lining of the pan there, what is that material behind the parapet?
It appears in that one picture that it has at one point been fiberglassed. At least, that's what it appears to me. If we can go back to that picture, that's what it looks like to me.
It's a very interesting picture in that there have been obviously lots of repairs over the years and everybody's repairing on everyone's previous mistakes and problems. And to me, I'm doing a similar project right now with the Omaha Underwater Treatment Plant in Nashville and they have similar leaks. It happens to be a built-up roof, not a shingle roof like yours, a very flat slope of quarter inch per foot, very, very slight. But it seems to me that you need, there's a couple of things that you could do to improve upon it. I would suggest that first off, you strip all of that protective layers, all those pan fiberglass and everything else and get back down to the original material. At that point, then you can find your leaks and repairs and physical repairs that you need to do. Typically, what we do in a built-in gutter, which are, they're beautiful designs, but they are a leak waiting to happen, is that you consider perhaps then making sure it's structurally sound and then you can do a couple of things. You can either reline that with something like a back with metal, but the joints then may again separate. That's what's going to typically happen. Or it'll rust out because you don't have enough fall to get the water out there quickly. The whole game is to get the water out quickly. In this particular case, you only have one downspout per corner of the building and I would say that you might, could consider having a secondary downspout on each side against, like near the front pilasters, you could put it in the corner where the pilaster turns the corner and goes back into the body of the building. You could hide one there and change your pitch of the trough that's up there. You could also create a cricket behind the parapet, which is a very flat gable roof where its hip would be no higher than your parapet and it would shed water to these downspouts. If you had just the one, it would shed it to that one downspout. If you added a second one, it would shed it to both of them. And then you could replace the drain from that connection out through the wall into the gutter and then down the downspout, down to the ground. So you could do the cricket, you could put in rubber, the EPDM, up behind and to the top of the stone cap, which looks like it's got all kinds of goop up there at this point. And you could do it to the top of that and then you could take it up. But when you take it up, the shingle roof, when you replace that, I would make sure the rubber goes higher than the top of the parapet because that's creating a ditch, if you will, up there. You want the water to overflow your parapet, then to go over your flashing, your rubber, and back into the building. What we typically do though, is we take the parapet off and take the rubber up to a point and transition with flashing, counter-flashing, and put flashing under that coping stone and set it back down so that you can easily repair it in the future. But I think you need to get all of that out of there. Now codes today typically, at least in Nashville, they do not allow you to have a parapet without an overflow scupper. And a scupper is the hole that you were talking about. And so, for instance, when you have these built-in gutters or parapets, typically what happens is the roof drains get clogged up. And if you don't have some kind of like squirrel cage over to keep the leaves away from it, but then leaves really still are going to pile up against it. So you've got to constantly be vigilant about keeping the debris out so the drain can do its job. And I think if you were to, you know, either add the cricket, line it with rubber and add scuppers, and maybe you added a scupper in each architectural panel. If you could go back perhaps to the photograph at the side, you could potentially add a scupper in the panel between the pilasters that reflects also in the parapet above. You could put an overflow scupper that if those downspouts get clogged up or frozen in the wintertime, the water could still come out and go over. So those would be right at the base of the parapet wall. They would be where the pan, it's usually up a bit because you want your drains to work first, but if your drains then clog up, it's a little bit higher typically, the scupper, so that it can come through and out. And it's lined so the water doesn't get into the brick and go then down your wall and inside.
Okay. It sounds to me like one of the things you said, removing the parapet wall and then putting the metal.
I wasn't suggesting removing the parapet wall, but removing all of the stuff that's been gooped in the trough.
All right.
And it looked to me, and I really couldn't tell from the photograph, that the parapet stone is either very deteriorated or that's just more of the repairs over the years and it might be part of the fiberglass that's there. But if that's the case and the stone is actually good, you could lift it up, run your rubber up the back face and terminate it into flashing, counter-flashing that runs under a sheet of copper, under that, between the brick parapet and the stone coping, so that you've got the copper preventing water coming through the top at the joints where the stone meets and you need to seal those well too. But it makes for an easy transition that water goes in up and over and out.
Okay.
Should it ever become a real problem. But parapets are beautiful architectural things, but they do create indeed lots of problems as to built-in, otherwise called queen Anne gutters. And they need to be maintained on a more frequent basis than any other kind of roofing design system that we know of, really. I mean, when I drove by today just to look again at other churches nearby, the Baptist Church has a similar type of no-parapet design that you're talking about, but it does indeed have a built-in gutter on that slope that's catching it. The problem they have apparently is they have built-in downspouts inside the wall or the building and not external. My fear for them is should it ever freeze, it's going to bust the seams and drench the wall, whereas your downspouts are on the outside. So it's the trough you have is the problem and the connection from the trough, the drain to that downspout, that's your weak link.
Okay. Now, when we talk about, we talked about relining, but when we're talking about the particular entry points or exit points from that, from that internal pan, what do we do? What would you recommend that we do about that internal piping or whatever's in there?
My guess is that over the years, you've probably, it's not been maintained and it may indeed already be cracked or rusted through and you probably need to go in there and replace it. It looks like you're about to approach doing some pretty major re-roofing anyway and so you might as well. You've only got four locations now for drains and so I would suggest that you go in there and investigate what's wrong with it and most likely replace it.
And appropriate material for that?
Well, I mean, you could put back metal, but you know it's going to come again in so many years. But if a building was built in 1913, you've almost had 100 good years of use for it, but you might do PVC piping that then you would connect to a metal downspout on the outside so that it looks like it did traditionally. I noticed that you have these rectangular metal downspouts. Historically, it would have been a round downspout. That would be nice to see back if you chose to replace them. But you do have the rectangular ones and we could, you know, you could put those back as well. But you might change from where the drain in the pan goes down to that hidden condition, change that to PVC piping so that it's going to last longer and not have a reason to seam split.
And aluminum would be still appropriate for that, even if it was round?
I think aluminum would do well. It wouldn't, it would not rust. It's again about maintenance and not freezing at that connection and causing it to split. And so getting water off quickly and so that it can't get stuck and there were leaves clogging it and this kind of thing. Aluminum could eventually split too, if it's not maintained.
Right.
But I think, I think either certainly reworking your pan and whether you keep one downspout and one drain per section or you add a second one to help get water off quickly. And then I would feel comfortable if we could work with you on locating a scupper to just protect your investment, your building. You might be able to put a small, modest one on the parapet as an overflow so that you don't have the extra burden should it get clogged up. Once you see it overflowing, then you know you've got a problem. You've got to go up there and clean out the drain.
Right. Okay. All right. So back to one of the original questions that we came with today, and that is regarding removal of the parapet walls. Is it, is it the opinion of the commission that that is something that would not be acceptable for us to do?
I only speak for one person.
Sure. Sure. Go ahead.
I want to mess your computer up here. My name's Steve Odom. I am the pastor of the church. Hank did a good job at explaining how we got to this point and where we are and what we need to do and why we've come here is to, partly to explain that, you know, the mission of our church, and usually the mission of any church, is not to necessarily maintain an historically accurate building. You know, the mission of the church is a religious mission rather than the interest and obviously mission that you have as an historic commission. Most of you are volunteers. All of our people are volunteers except for myself that work on maintenance and property and things like that. Some of you are probably on those kind of committees at your own church. With regard to laying down rubber or that kind of material and keeping the parapets, one of the difficulties with that is that the rubber does itself degrade and requires a little more of an active maintenance. None of us has ever been up on that roof. It's the kind of roof you don't want to get on unless you're a professional roof man. And so it's really quite difficult for a volunteer organization to do the kind of regular, active, somewhat intensive maintenance on that kind of roof, which is part of the reason why we've come asking for the ability to remove the parapet so that it's a more of a, you know, you might call it a traditional roof, not a queen Anne roof, but a normal looking roof that would still fit in with the character of the building and the character of the neighborhood somewhat and would not be, it would not be an obtrusive building. It would not be adding something unusual and modern and contemporary, but it would just be making it easier for Central Christian Church to, with the funds that we have, which are not limitless, to maintain this historic building in the historic district. As we've been looking through this, it appears to us that several of the historic churches in Murfreesboro are not in the historic district and giving us a little heartburn over why we're in the historic district and we have to, you know, get permission to make exterior changes and things like that. So we've been a little puzzled about that. I know that's not the issue today. But we hope that, that we can work with the commission so that we can get a way to do this in a way that's financially feasible for a church that, you know, like many churches of our size, is just not made of money. So, but thank you for your attention. Do you have any questions for me particularly?
Well, Steve, I would just say that today, we would not be able to vote on it since I have to abstain from voting and we need five members.
I see.
So we would have to do that at a future time, but I would encourage the board's opinion on the removal of the parapet itself and at least you'll know individually where this particular point.
Yeah, it'd be helpful to hear from other, other members of your commission.
Yeah. Well, I'll start off myself with just an opinion and, you know, we've had some discussions before. I think the parapets are a major architectural piece of the building and I personally would hate to see them go, but I certainly understand the financial issues that you're faced with in the upcoming maintenance of the situation. I would like to hopefully be able to find through interaction with the board and other factors that you might on the outside come up with a, a solution that would minimize the maintenance in the future and yet, and still be a less cost proposition than removing the parapets itself. That's my opinion at this particular point. But Jim, what's your thoughts?
Well, certainly you could use copper to reline it and you could weld those seams and solder those seams and it would, it would last you a long time. But anything, as you know, has to be maintained and nothing is maintenance free. It just isn't. And so I would, I would be surprised frankly if the repairs that I'm suggesting would be more expensive than actually taking it down and rebuilding the top that you suggest. So I would, I would welcome getting a proposal or seeing a proposal from your contractor for both approaches. I do think it's a significant feature and I would really like to see it for me.
I agree with Jim. I think, I think the parapet is an important feature. I think one of the big problems is, has been the improper maintenance. You know, one of, in historic preservation, the two enemies of buildings that people commonly cite are asphalt and Portland cement. So anytime someone goes in and patches something with asphalt, they've actually harmed it. And so if you were to go back to the original design and then it will probably take a little more maintenance, somebody's got to get up on top of the roof. It wouldn't be me because I'm scared of heights, but it isn't a bad pitch, you know, on that roof. But if it were properly maintained, I think the, you suppose it was copper originally?
It could be copper. It could have been galvanized metal sorts, a turn-coated steel sheet.
Built in 1912, so, you know, a properly constructed and maintained feature like that might actually cost you a lot less in the long run than this, than this repair would be. That's my impression.
Well, I guess I'm next then. I too would hate to see the parapet go because I think it's a very important part of the architecture. I do think that there are ways, as Jim suggested, that would be very feasible and could work out. I do think that either way you go though, you're going to have to add some additional exterior downspouts like Jim suggested just to get more of that water off the roof anyway. So I can see both reasons for it, but if we could figure out a way that was financially acceptable for you all and still keep the parapets, I think that would be a good thing.
I have no expertise whatsoever in this, in this area and I've already learned a lot. So I would, I would think it would be nice just to go, like Jim said, both ways and see what's, what's feasible and make, what makes sense to you and then to the committee.
Did you want to speak?
I'm Tom Hayes, Mr. Chairman and a couple of members of the commission. I address this to Jim. If, could you perhaps, or would you have any drawings of this general design that you could point us to or where we could find those to show another architect or an engineer to look at to give us a more detailed estimate than perhaps we would be able to get without that?
As every building is unique and different- As every building is unique and different, there are no sort of standard things, but I'd be happy to work with a designer, architect, you may employ, contractor, and send sketches back and forth and suggest approaches on that. Be happy to.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Jim, would you talk to the very top of the parapet on how to, because I personally think that that's also where some seepages come in to the roof because it's some sort of tar that's on top of it now that it's all cracked.
The project that I mentioned to you earlier, they had done the same thing. They carried fiberglass up on the top of it and in fact went on top of the coping stone. And so, water's getting in because it has delaminated from that stone, water is getting in underneath it from blowing rains and actually going in and coming, going right under the, in this case, the pan that you might have. And those joints, and one of, Gib, you mentioned there's two things, you know, tar and everything. The other thing is height. People don't get up to where they can't get to, or they're afraid to get up there. I have a height issue, too. But, I would imagine that your coping stone, the joints are probably no longer sealed at the joints, and they probably have open, open joints there. But, it's always good to put a flashing piece there, and we always use copper and have it project out beyond the face of the brick below a little bit and point down as a trip edge so that water, should it get somehow through the coping stone, it gets to that copper flashing, and it pitches it to the outside. Then, on the inside, it goes through the wall and over, and then you flash and counter-flash there, and you allow a way for the material to come up in the pan to that joint, and it laps and covers it, but it provides an easy replacement point to remove it. And you leave then that copper flashing under the coping stone that's never touched again typically. I mean, it's going to last you quite a while, and you wouldn't have to worry about it. But, I would, I would recommend that you put, take the coping stone off. It appeared at one point that it looked like it was extremely deteriorated, but I suspect it was strictly the problem with the fiberglass material flashing that was adhered on there. The other thing I caution you is that more than likely, the mastic used for that fiberglass probably contains asbestos, and you'll need to abate it. Because it's, it's likely to have asbestos in the fibers. And it will be a low percentage, but it will be required to be abated.
Well, you know, as we look at going the two different ways, you know, one issue that's there is that if we retain the walls, clearly, they're going to have to be re-tuck pointed and repaired. So, that's going to be one element of expense on that side. When we go looking for professional input on this, should we be looking for an historical engineer, an architect? What should we be looking for?
There are historic architects in middle Tennessee that you could call upon. I'd be happy to give you some names, and they could help design that with you. There are also roofing experts you could call upon. I'd be happy to give you a name of some, and then contractors or what have you, but there are no people that could help you with that.
Okay. Yeah, we really do feel that we want to have somebody with a good engineering background up in that attic looking at the conditions before we make a decision on where we want to go.
It's not surprising at all to me that I saw that your plank decking is split. I mean, just as, as long as it's been up there, the heat that it's held, it's, the wood is brittle, and it's probably just frankly time that it needs to be replaced and put up some, you know, some either sheets of plywood or something else up there to help maintain the integrity of that system and then deal with your pan and your flashing and your parapet and that kind of thing.
Any other statements or questions from our group? Okay. I guess my next question would be, we can go ahead and get in touch with you about resources for the kind of expertise we need. And then, can we bring those back to the commission?
Yes. What I would suggest and sort of recap, Mr. Mills, is that Jim is willing to give you those contacts and then work with those contacts and some of the ideas that he's had since he's got so much experience with the parapets. In addition to that, you need to get the estimates of removal cost versus what it would do to repair and the parapets themselves and keep them as they are, with the exception of some possible additional tumor drains.
We're gathering those estimates. And I think what was removal, $5,500?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think removal was, was at $5,500, I think it was. But, we'll finish gathering those. We have, in some cases, we have kind of apples and oranges in terms of the estimates, so we'll have to kind of sort that out. And then, one thing that, that we had discussed earlier had to do with the fact that we are approaching spring rains, and we would really like to try to get this done and taken care of. You won't be meeting again for another month. If we have some things together before that time, would it be possible for us to come before you for a special call meeting to address the issues?
Yes, we can, we can try to make that happen.
Okay.
And what we normally try to do in that regard is same time, same day of the week, okay, versus, because generally, you know, this particular time and Tuesday of the week is the best for our board. So, if we do have a meeting prior to the next month's meeting, then we would try to do it on a Tuesday afternoon.
Well, and we can keep you appraised of how we're progressing, and perhaps we'll want to be on the agenda for next month. Perhaps we won't get there any sooner than that, but we'll be working on it as quickly as we can.
Yeah, just let Mr. Lewis know if you officially want to be on the agenda next month, and also if you want a meeting prior to our next month's meeting.
All right. Any comments? I thank you all. We do appreciate it. I think you've given us some good information and good places to start, and we will be back in touch with you. Thank you.
The last thing I'd like to say is that, and I can't remember the name of the church on the corner of College and is it Spring Street that has the parapets around you?
Oh, President. You're right.
I would suggest that you contact that church and see what their experience has been with their parapets and if they have special contractors that do that kind of work.
All right. Good.
Thanks a lot for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Lewis, do we have any newer old business that we need to, to go over?
I don't have any other, other business or staff reports, other than just we need to talk about replacing one of our members.
Yeah, Rob Sanders has turned in his resignation. He's had to move out of the territory here, and so we need to replace Rob. And so, any folks that are in our audience that would be interested in being on this particular board need to contact Brenda Davis or Robert Lewis at 893-6441. 893-6441. And they will send you an application. And when you fill that application out, make two copies, send one directly to Mayor Bragg, who makes the final decision, and one to Mr. Lewis, who will present it to our board. And we will, as always, make a recommendation out of a handful of applications that we have to the, to the mayor, but the mayor makes the final decision. Anything else? Have Bush to adjourn?
Some.
Thank you. Second. All right. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.